Cheryl, do you want to lead us in the pledge today?
Oh, I would be honored.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to get going here. Ten seconds. So we're going to call to order the meeting of the Grand Travis County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, April 19th, 2017. I can talk. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Cheryl will lead us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please, Sarah. Mayor?
Here.
Gore Flat? Here. Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
Here.
Crawford? Here. I show Johnson and Lathir is excused. Okay. So we'll have approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes of April 15th, 2017? That was a regular meeting. Okay with that. Those stand approved. The minutes of April 11th, 2017, the equalization meeting. Good with that. Those stand approved. Minutes of April 12th, 2017, last week's study session regarding the pension. Those stand approved. And the minutes of April 12th, 2017, the special session regarding the audit. Well, good on that. Those stand approved as well. So now's our chance for first public comment. Will you read the rules, please, Sarah?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson.
Okay. Does anybody have public comment at this time? To step up to the podium? Nobody?
They're all bashful.
They're all bashful. There will be a chance for public comment as we go along, too, so... Okay. So we'll close first public comment. Have approval of the agenda. Does anybody have... I have one thing to add to the agenda. Under Finance, after the monthly report, number two, we want to add an introduction of the head of our audit team. Anybody else have anything to add?
It's not the agenda necessarily, but the... To discuss the future of the Pension Advisory Board, which...
That's going to be next... That's going to be the first week in May.
Okay. So the first meeting in May?
I'll talk about that a little later, yeah.
Okay, great.
Any other additions? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, the consent calendar. Sarah, please.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety at www.grantrevs.org. A, receive and file. One, county staff report, March and April. Two, Conservation District month report for March. Three, 2016 Planning Commission annual report supplemental information. B, approvals. One, Older Americans Month, May 2017. Two, claims for the month of March. Three, medical examiner addendum number two to the interlocal agreement and budget amendment. Four, budget amendments. Five, hauler licenses. Six, ad hoc recommendations to fill vacancies for planning and parks and rec commissions. Seven, ratify approval of GovHRUSA as search firm for county administrators' search.
Does any one of the Commissioners have anything to remove from the consent calendar for a discussion?
Madam Chairman, I would move to... Or ask that we move the medical examiner's contract. It is slightly different than... We got a revised one this afternoon, so we should have Wendy explain the difference.
Okay. Anybody else? Cheryl?
Number four. Number five. And under receive and file of the county staff report.
Okay. Anyone of administration want anything pulled to for discussion? Anybody in the public? Okay. Would entertain a motion?
Can we pull six, too?
B6?
Yeah.
Okay. There's not a lot left. Okay. So what's left? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items A3...
No, A1.
Oh, I'm sorry. A1, B3, 4, 5, and 6.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to special orders of business. We have a public hearing for brownfield plan for the Food for Thought Center starring Jean.
Thank you. With me today is the developer, Chip Hogland, and Greg Young, and the architect, Ray Kendra, along with the environmental consultant from Atbal Ma'vi, Mac McCollum. And for the public hearing, I'll give an overview of the brownfield plan. The architect will review the interior look and the renderings of the building and give you a company... The company will give you an overview of what will be in the building itself. The Food for Thought, the combined brownfield plan, as identified in your packet, is a repurposing of the former Long Lake Elementary School in Long Lake Township. The new location for food... The building itself will be for the new location for Food for Thought with a private investment of $4.8 million. As a reminder, for a brownfield to be qualified, it has to have either one of the four criterias. It has to be environmentally... There's an environmental issue on the property, blighted, functionally obsolete, or historical nature. The functionally obsolescence is the test for this project. It does meet that criteria as determined by the township assessor of Long Lake Township. The brownfield expenses, the eligible expenses, are identified at $510,823 for specifically selective demolition and leaden asbestos abatement and some environmental criteria, eligible activities. It is a 12-year plan with eight years being needed to repay the developer and four years to go into the local site remediation fund. The impact on the taxing jurisdictions, the impact currently, it's at a zero base level. The property is currently held by TCAPS itself. Repurposing this, it'll go into the hands of a private developer and new taxes will be generated. And it also will get our largest agricultural... Our economic driver is agriculture. Food for Thought works with the agricultural industry and it'll help spur additional new jobs with that. After the project is complete, the brownfield plan, it is anticipated that over $3.2 million will be generated on this property. The taxing jurisdictions participation in there is showed on this chart. The state of Michigan is the largest participant in this project at over $283,000. Grand Travis County is second at $99,000. And then it goes to ISD, NMC, and then the library as well. But the state participation really is important in any brownfield as they are typically the largest participant. It's almost dollar-for-dollar that they participate with our community in approving a brownfield plan. This is really a return on your investment. It's a zero base right now. Having $4.8 million of new private investment shows that we'll be getting... Right now, we're getting zero as Grand Travis County, at the end of this, will have $17,000 annually of new taxes that'll come into our general fund. The public purpose, I highlighted within the resolution and in your packet as well, it is reusing a vacant building and it's also a liability to our school system, TCAPS. It'll have increased investment, new jobs, and again, I'll reiterate, it really supports our local agricultural industry, which is our largest economic driver in Grand Travis County and the state of Michigan. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chip Hogland and Greg Young, who will go into what the building will be used for.
Thank you for your time, and I'll try to keep it short. Okay?
I'm the AV nerd.
Yeah, she was going to say my age. Okay, I want to thank Jean.
I've heard other terms, Mac. I'm careful, sir.
And Jean did a great job last night with Long Lake Township. Sunny, I think you were there to explain what brownfields are. I'll briefly say the back of the '90s, I ran the EDC for Ingham County, and I wish that we had tools like this at the time. At then, at that time, if you wanted to develop something, you couldn't take a blighted facility or especially you couldn't take environmentally damaged facilities because banks wouldn't touch it. But I'm a strong believer in reusing property when possible, and this came to me last summer and I saw the opportunity quickly. Just recently, we purchased the Glacier Dome, 1610 Barlow, and rehabbed that. That's the new home for Cherry Capital Foods and Tamarack Holdings, my holding company. Let's see, I was going to say, most of this stuff is going to be handled by professionals because they speak better than I do on these things. I learned recently, I believe that we do have a tentative state approval on this, so we're moving through the process. And my only other note here is, my wife's here this evening, and I have to say that when she took a look at Barlow back in '13, I think it was, the Glacier Dome, she took one look at it and told me, "Don't you dare." And last summer, we took a walk through this facility, and after a couple hours, she said, "You know, you can do something with this." So I feel very good about it. We plan to be moving Food for Thought in there for processing. And one thing that Greg will bring up in better detail, one thing we have in mind is a lot of food processing is now done out of state, and we want to bring it back to the area. I'm open for questions. If not, we're going to turn over to Greg.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you, Chip. And so for Food for Thought, we're a small company, started by my little brother about 20 years ago, and with the idea of creating a very environmentally aware, very positive company with a goal of creating and raising awareness for a just and sustainable food system. And Tim started out making organic food before most people even knew what that meant, and he's really carried that on, and that's really still part of our DNA. We make partnerships with local farmers where we can. We use fair trade products. Obviously, we make organic and some non-organic products. We use non-GMO whenever we can and whenever it makes sense as well. So if you haven't seen our products, and I hope you all have, we make primarily preserves, maple syrup, salsas, mustard, salad dressings, those kinds of things that you typically will find in a jar. And as I said, we try to use as many local ingredients as we possibly can. And as Chip mentioned, one of the key areas for us is we really try to in-source a lot of business that has left the state, or companies that do sell their products in the state but have moved to other locations for economic or other reasons. So the last bullet point on there is, one of the key focus areas in this project is to give us the space and the capacity to be able to competitively compete out there in the market and keep business here in Michigan. So next is, there's a lot of collaboration that has gone on and continues to go on with a number of different organizations, some that are mentioned up here. We're working with Seeds on some environmental enablers. We want to do things like, there's with our cooking that we do for our product, we generate obviously a lot of heat. We'd like to recapture that and reuse that for heating the building or for other means. And Seeds is helping us with that and a number of other projects. We're working with a number of different organizations within MSU to try to help us with this project and use best practices. Northern Michigan College, we've been talking to them about having education onsite. They're very, very interested. We've had several meetings with them. In addition, we've been talking to Munson about doing teaching there for food, you know, as building your health. And we actually have a walkthrough meeting with them tomorrow as well. And as I mentioned before, we're talking to a lot of local food companies because part of the... Part of this is not only just the co-packing that we would do for some food companies, but, you know, as you can imagine, the two wings of this property have a lot of classrooms. And beyond just the educational opportunities for NMC and Munson, we're looking at having several spaces there for small companies to incubate those companies so that we can build more business in northern Michigan. And then finally, TCAPS, we've been in discussions with them. We've met with Kate Berwinkle, the principal over at the New Long Lake School, which is just behind us, about potential programs to do with her kids in her elementary school. Because we plan to have hoop houses onsite, Food for Thought, we do grow some of our organic ingredients, not all of them, but some of them. And it's an opportunity for us to share and be able to give kids an appreciation for how things are grown and how they end up on their table. Any questions? Thank you.
Are you going to expand your line of foods, sort of?
That's our intent. The place, Tom, where we are right now, you literally... We are literally shoehorned into that space, and this is going to give us a lot more space. We're even looking at some different processing technologies to get us into some different product lines. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ray Kendra with Environment Architects. I'm going to switch to a different computer here so you can do a... May I fly around for you? We were lucky enough to work with Cherry Capital Foods on the renovation that they did at the Barlow project, so that was a very exciting project. It's a really neat thing that you had the opportunity to go to that facility. There's some great things that happened there, and we expect the same kind of things are going to happen at the Long Lake facility. If people have driven by that Long Lake facility right now, it's obsolete, as Jean mentioned, but it's in rough shape, too. The parking lot's falling apart, the building's not being used. It's really kind of a hazard. So it's going to be exciting to see things happening at that site in the near future. So what we're really looking at doing is, on the front of the building, there's not going to be a whole lot of change other than upgrading some windows, cleaning things up. The parking lot will be completely renovated, so that'll be a brand-new situation there. Most of the activity that we're going to be working on will be inside the building. A lot of the brownfield funds are going to be going towards demolition, and Mac will cover that in a second. But we're really pretty much gutting the building from top to bottom. New roof, a lot of the interior finishes are going to be removed, so we'll have new finishes in there. And then there's an addition of about 15,000 square feet or so off the backside of the building, and that will also encompass some loading docks and some things that will support the activities. And that's going to be primarily used for the production area for Food for Thought. The existing portions of the school, the school consists of essentially two wings. There was the gymnasium, then the cafeteria, and kind of the support spaces in the middle. So potentially, there's going to be some education-type activities that are happening where those old classrooms were. And then in this east wing, where there was some also classrooms, that's where we envision the potential to do some small incubator food-type spaces. That's what's occurring right now at a portion of that 1610 Barlow property, so they have experience already doing this. And actually, I think very quickly, they had a waiting list with companies that were looking to get into that facility. So the existing gymnasium's going to turn into a high pile storage situation, and then again, on the backside, we're going to have some coolers, production space, and loading docks. On the site, there will be some space for agriculture. The zoning permit will allow us to do a storage building at the back, and then there's the hoop houses and some potential solar arrays that may occur as well. So very quick kind of overview, but if you have any questions specifically, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So since this is a public hearing, open it up to the public if anybody has any public comment on this particular issue. No? Anybody? Okay. And will this... Sunny, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I went through the entire presentation last night, not quite the abbreviated one we got tonight with Long Lake Township, and the township officials seemed to be very pleased with the project. And more importantly to me, the gentleman that I'm not sure if all the participants knew that was asking all of the question is the immediate adjacent neighbor.
Oh.
And... But they handled the questions very well, and he was very pleased with the reuse of this property and the environmental impact that it could have. So I'm very excited to support this project and hopefully we can move forward. You know, these big buildings like that, when they set vacant for just a few years, they start to become very deteriorated. You know, when you drive by, it's, you know, it's only been six or seven years since the new school was built, probably, and this building is looking very, very old. So, you know, we're real excited to have it refurbished, have it repurposed, and even more importantly, that it's going to be added back to a tax roll. You know, this building has had multiple additions over the years. You know, I went there when I was five years old, so it's been there a while.
Wow, it's that old.
But it's had several additions since then, too. But the bottom line is, you know, this is a parcel of property, 10 acres, that has never been on the tax roll for a long, long time. So it's nice that, you know, here's an opportunity for it to come back and be put back on the tax roll and the community to benefit from it.
Anybody else? Come up for a vote a little bit later. Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, and we will move on. You have the items removed from the consent calendar. We will start with the county staff report. I believe this is Cheryl. Wanted that?
Yes, I just had a question. Both the March and the April staff reports had a statement from Information Technology stating that work is continuing on whatever it is they're working on.
The IT strategic plan.
And the March one said it's going to be done in April, and the April one said it's going to be done in May. And my concern is that we're currently paying the IT person, who I believe is a consultant, a very hefty sum of money to be doing this work, and I'm concerned that with each month that goes by, we're spending more and more money, and we don't know what we're spending it on. So do we have a sense that the finish line is in sight, at least with regard to getting a proposal for us to look at?
Yes, absolutely. We're hoping to bring that to you the second meeting in May.
You're hoping to, or you will? Because it was going to be April.
It is planned to bring to you the second meeting in May.
Okay. Well, we'll hold... We'll write that down. Thank you.
No problem.
So do we need... Do we need to approve each one of these individually, or can we do that at the end? Okay. All right, we'll move on to B3, the medical examiner. Sunny?
Yeah, there was some revisions in the amendment to the contract, so as near as I could read it, they were very minor, but I thought maybe Wendy should speak to the changes.
And there she is.
Here I am. Wendy, Chief Health Officer. So the changes in this really reflect that Benzie County is now not in this... In our local agreement, that you have the new appointments of Dr. DeYoung as the chief medical examiner, and then the deputy medical examiners, and then the new cost for Lelandon County. I will tell you, it's a kind of a clunky way. Where Chris and the Lelandon County lawyer and I all had conference calls, we talked a little about Friday and Monday, and we all agreed we're going to redo the entire agreement for the next fiscal year because that will complete the current medical examiner four-year term. That'll give us some kind of months to see how some of these... We're going through a ton of transitions. So we will change all that so it's a much cleaner document, and then the addendums after that hopefully would just be sort of annual budget changes. So the Lelandon County lawyer, Chris made the initial draft, Lelandon County, on Monday afternoon after I caught some formatting changes and some numbering issues, so he fixed them, but I think there's a couple typos in there that one of the Commissioners caught. But it doesn't change anything, I don't think, of any real substance. I did go to the Lelandon County Board last night, and they have... We have two signed originals from them, so...
Thank you, Wendy.
I had a question or comment on it. Part of the contract says that 60 days prior to the renewal date, we can get out of the contract, or they can get out of the contract. Either one of us, either us or them can get out within 60 days of the renewal date, correct?
Yes.
So I'm asking that prior to the 60 days, I would like a report from you on how the contract is going, how the dollars are going, you know, how many people have died, what it's cost us, you know, kind of do a cost-benefit analysis. And I know that this is a short contract, so I get that 60 days is going to come screaming at us pretty quickly, but to the extent that we can take a look at it, because it's one of those renewable, renewable, renewables, okay? I mean, it's going to just keep renewing once we get into the cycle. And I'd like to have some feedback before we get into that cycle.
All right, yeah. What they initially proposed was Western Michigan, which is a separate contract from this interlocal agreement, but this does reference that. They initially proposed a four-year contract. Actually, a four... Four years, nine months. That would get us through this term and that, but because we've got two boards and we have annual budgets, we did get them to change that, so it's reflective of appropriations. But I will remind you that it's mandated, so we still have to provide the services. As I get closer to that time, I might ask you some questions about what you mean about cost-benefit analysis.
Well, I know that this...
I mean, I know what that is, but I'm not sure from a medical examiner standpoint what you're thinking about.
Well, can you give me a ballpark of what it cost us, our prior arrangement cost us versus what this arrangement cost us?
Yeah, and I have previously, too, so...
This is a whole lot more.
Yep, because we have a team of forensic pathologists.
That's what I want to talk about.
Yep.
Okay? Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions?
So has Benzie backed out or changed their mind? Our costs went up, too?
A little bit because it was prorated. So when Benzie was in, we were paying, and it was based on population, so we were paying 70, and the other two counties were paying 15% each, and now it's based on population. We're paying 80, they're paying 20, Lelandon County.
So their costs went up, too?
Their costs went up. And actually, prorating based on population and not where the deaths occurred benefits us because of Munson.
Anybody else? Thank you, Wendy. Move on to number four, budget amendments. Cheryl, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question about whether or not... I see that there's an amendment with regard to the contract with Comfort Keepers. Are we bidding the services of Comfort Keepers, or are we just...
So this is kind of an administrative correction. There are a number of cleanup things that needed to happen with the COA budget. The RFP for on-call services was bid last year, and that's what some of this is for. The full-time RN started, I believe it was this Monday, and we'll be transitioning out that full-time RN that's currently there, that's provided by the vendor, at the end of this week.
So in answer to my question...
We will no longer need those full-time RN services.
Okay.
But we have bid out the other services, which were the on-call services.
You did that a year ago.
It would have been, I believe, last fall.
Okay. And when's it due to be bid out again?
I believe it was a two-year contract. I'd have to double-check.
Okay. If you'd let us know.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Hauler licenses? Cheryl? Progress?
The... So there's an issue. Do we need to go through the plan and then the process? So what we're going to do is confer with Christina Miller in the next two and a half weeks, talk about really the need for going through the process of knowing if there are their alternatives. So we'll be exploring that in the next two and a half.
The question is simply, can we edit some items out of our plan without having to go through the whole process? You know, I've, I've done the convoluted process twice. It's, it's very long, very complicated to do a full plan amendment, not only to rewrite the project, but also then you have to take it out to each of the townships and the cities and the villages to get it ratified before you can pass it. And there's a, I think it's a 90-day, I think it's a 90-day public input process. It's a very lengthy process to try to do the amendment. And we just simply need to edit some things because when we entered into the contract with the management company to manage our resource recovery department, there are things that we no longer do.
Well, I, my, my concern was and continues to be, basically, people come in, they fill out a little piece of paper, they pay their 50 bucks, and we say, "Yeah, you're, you're now approved by the County of Grand Travers to haul whatever and to dump it wherever." And I see that as a huge potential, well, I'm saying theoretically, okay?
No, because-
I mean, you don't know where grandpa's hauling service is going to take the, the stuff that he's got in his trailer.
A condition of their license is that they have to haul it to an approved site. And there's a list of approved facilities in which they can take it.
And if they don't, who's on the line?
Well, the question is how well we're policing it. And personally, I wanted to get rid of hauler licenses a long time ago because I, I don't believe that we license 50% of the people that are hauling waste in our community.
I, I'm just saying, I, I, this jumped at me from day one as a potential liability and for the minimal amount of money it's generating for us. I mean, who used to handle the, the, have we always handled the permits? I mean, what's it generate for us? $2,000 a year?
Probably less than that.
Probably less than that? And what's the exposure?
For a long, for a long time, they were $25. I think they were 15 at one point, if, you know, depending if you, if you got them later or if you got them on time.
I, I am just saying, I'm concerned. I, I don't know, I appreciate what you're doing and, and I know you're working on it and I just want you to know I'm thinking about it, so.
And, and I'll tell you, and like I said initially back, I can't remember if it's January, but, you know, my concern was compliance with the, my thought was we have to go through that process. But if we don't, if we can make changes to our ordinance, make tweaks here and there, I fully support it.
Super.
We made the decision to hire a management contract on a very short notice and, you know, there was a lot of discussion about whether that was a compliance issue at the time the decision was made to do it moving forward and we haven't done anything with the plan yet.
Okay, so I'll try not to bug you too much, but I'm, I'm looking, especially when it comes up on our agenda.
Yes.
So, I would move to, oh, I'm sorry, you have one more.
And was Sarah, were you looking for an answer to how much money it brings in?
Yes, just a minute.
Or you can tell us at the end.
You can refer back later.
Yeah, that's fine. While you're doing that, we can move on to-
Is there a fine for people who don't get a permit?
The, if they get-
If they're caught.
-caught, then they have to pay double the fee to get the permit.
Ooh, $100.
I don't, don't remember if there's a fee over that.
Sarah?
So, we have budgeted that we're going to receive $1,000 in filing fees for applications and we've received to date 550.
It's not, it's never been worth the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on that one? Okay. The ad hoc recommendations for planning and parks. Tom, you had something to say?
Well, I'll see Jennifer, and I'm not sure who the, what the parks recreation person looks like, but, but John Nelson is here for planning. So, I just wanted to congratulate and welcome you to the County Planning Commission, John. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll need a motion to receive and file A1 to approve B3, 4, 5, and 6.
Some of.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorflette, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Departmental items. Now, we can talk about the Brownfield Food for Thought Center.
Mayor Chairman, I would, I'm sorry. I would move to approve the combined Brownfield Plan and Work Plan for Food for Thought in Long Lake Township.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Willak, supported by Commissioner Gorflette. Is there any further discussion on that? Yeah, Cheryl?
I'm, I'm also on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, so I've heard this presentation in greater length at the Brownfield. And this is just really exciting. As a farm girl, I have to tell you, this just does my little heart good to see this happen with this school. And I just can't think of a better use. I just love that an old building is being brought back to life in such a positive way. And I hope we do more and more of this because this is just really, this is what it's all about. Thank you so much.
Ron?
I did say, oh, two and a half years ago, to Gene, to, I'd like to see some manufacturing come in and see Brownfield used for what it was meant for, in my opinion. And I do look forward to supporting this Brownfield. So, thank you for bringing it in and bringing some more of these.
Yeah, I, I love, go ahead.
And I did notice that, and you did make a point, it's 12 years. And I made a note on here, and there's no pork on here. As in, no other streetscapes, no other water services. It's all this project. So, thank you for your work on it.
And I love that you're going to bring Michigan manufactured food. I, every time I go to the store, like, "Not made here, oh, made here." I like that. I like that a lot. That's jobs for, for everybody and it's darn good stuff. So, makes me feel good. So, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go. We will move on to the airport. Approval for airport to acquire navigation easements in connection with the extension of the runway.
Thanks, Sarah.
Kevin, as soon as everybody else clears out. Get our next presentation. Oh, we're going to close that one out? Another one.
Good evening. Kevin Klein, Cherry Capital Airport Director. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm, we're going to talk about the runway project, but since it's been a while since I've come in front of you, I also thought I'd give you a little update about the airport at the same time. So, if I'll digress to that, but however, before coming before you and the public comments I've had about the runway project, I want to put the rest at ease. I am not here to ask for money.
Yay.
So, I put that right up front. That's been the number one question with this project, so I'm not here to ask for Airport operations over the last, since 2011, we've seen over 100,000 passengers add to our total passenger count. In 2011, we had a total of passengers of 352,000. And in 2016, we had a record year for Cherry Capital Airport at 451,000 passengers. That surpasses our 2005 record, which was 429,000 passengers. So, we're very excited with that opportunity and showing our growth. It shows our region is coming back, not only from a tourism standpoint, but also from a business standpoint. As we saw that business struggles from 2008 through 2010 and into 2011, we really are now seeing the return of the business traveler. So, we're very excited with that. I also like to give a little bit of information on the airport finance and how we finance our operation. Our operating and maintenance budget is about $5.4 million. It's supported through landing fees, aircraft landing fees, the parking lot fees, our rental rates or our rental fees for income on our property from hangars to the terminal building being rented out to the various airlines, car rentals to operate that space. Also supported by concessionaire fees on percentage of products sold through our gift shop, so.
How much of that 5.4 million is in federal dollars?
That is all operating dollars from the airport operating budget.
How much do you receive from federal dollars?
That'll be the next slide.
Ah-ha. Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your-
No problem. You're going to steal my thunder. But I always like to, to point out a few quick facts on this side, slide. The first passenger through the new airline terminal was President George Bush at the time. So, I, I always like to, everybody asks, "Who was the first passenger through the terminal?" It was the President.
George W. or H.W.?
George W.
Wow.
The first two planes at the, at the new airport to use the ramp were Air Force One and Air Force Two.
Correct. That, usually it's followed immediately, "Who was the second?" And so, continuing, our capital budget, which is supported through the airport improvement program dollars, is $1.8 million per year that we receive. That airport improvement program dollars is the ticket tax that you see on your tickets. So, when you buy your airfare, I'll just use a round number of $300, and then there's all the ticket tax fees that go on top of that, which make up generally around another $75 to $80 on top of it. That is the money that goes back to the airport improvement program. And those funds then are distributed to airports across the system based on passengers that go through the building. So, that's one of the main reasons why we really push for those to use the local airport because that money brings back capital dollars to, to go into improving runways, taxiways, terminal buildings, buying snow removal equipment, firefighting equipment. So, I always like to point out Cherry Capital Airport receives no local taxpayer dollars. This takes, this chart takes a look at how things are broken up and how they fit that $5.4 million. Our, our main source of income comes from rental income. So, our really, when you look at what is Cherry Capital Airport, we're landlord. It's our goal to lease our property to maximize our revenue coming into the airport. 18% comes from car rental income, basically concessionaire fees that the car rentals with leasing, are renting out cars. Our parking lot's 22%. And then landing fees, fuel flow fees, and just general other income that comes in through advertising at the airport is, rounds out the rest of our revenue stream coming in. Personnel costs, 40% of all our costs are personnel costs related. Purchased services is our next highest income. And purchased services, of course, are attorney fees, our engineering fees, our firefighting contract with the city of Traverse City, our armed guard contract. So, those are our typical purchased services that we have at the airport. And then our other costs is general occupancy. As being the landlord, we have costs for our tenants to be at the airport. So, in 2017, what's some of the great news that we have, this is our route map that's at the airport. American Airlines just announced Dallas service for the summer of 2017 begins June 2nd through August 21st. That rounds out or adds our eighth city to our summertime schedule. So, Chicago and Detroit are our main stays on a year-round basis. We have New York Laguardia, Newark, New Jersey, Atlanta, Georgia, of course Dallas-Fort Worth, Denver, Colorado, Minneapolis-St. Paul. So, we're very excited with those carriers. What makes Cherry Capital Airport great and very unique is that hub service is our cornerstone to our passengers getting to the world. And so, it's difficult to ask for an airline to have direct service to Orlando when we only see about 10 to 12 people a day going to Orlando. But if we take 10 to 12 people a day going to Orlando, another 16 or 17 going to New York, another 20 going to Chicago and San Francisco and LA, and add them all up and put them over a hub, we got outstanding service. And when we look to a community our size with population, to be able to have eight cities is just outstanding. A lot of communities will compare themselves to us and say, "We need that same amount of city." But the return on investment for the airlines is not there. And so, we're kind of a model for our size of community. Projects that are going on in 2017, we just completed a land lease with Bill Marsh for the Price Point property. That is rental income coming into, to the airport. We leased additional space to North Flight Aeromed to construct a larger hangar. Many of you know that North Flight has both a fixed wing aircraft and a helicopter, and they went to the new larger helicopter with the merger with North Flight Aeromed. They have a Sikorsky 76, so they built a larger facility. So, we're able to lease additional land. Of course, the Costco wholesale project is under construction now. We assisted the sale of Cherry Capital Aviation, which has been a longtime maintenance operator at the airport, to 45 North. So, we're looking for new growth opportunities, fresh ideas coming in, as Cherry Capital Aviation has been a longtime family-run business that the family has now got to retirement age and has looked to divest their business, but they're still there running their maintenance, maintenance operation. Another capital project that we're working on is carpeting the terminal. We like to refer it to as the new airline terminal because it's still so new to us. However, we've seen over 11 million passengers go over the carpet and, since its inception, and so the carpet needs to be replaced. Our runway 28, 10-28 extension, we'll talk about in a moment. And then contracts that are going to be renewed this year, our parking lot operation, our firefighting and security, all those contracts will be renewed this year. And then the focus of the airport commission is to update strategic and business plans. So, to get into the runway 10 project, what we're asking tonight is really because both counties, Leland County and Grand Travers County are owners of the property. We're going to need to negotiate with property owners to obtain navigation easement rights, to remove some trees, other obstructions that are within the current approach and would be with the new approach for that particular runway. What the FAA requires us to do anytime we enter in property negotiations is to have the full authority to negotiate these navigation easements, including combination rights. So, we want to make sure that when we proceed forward, we come back to both counties because anytime we update any type of property within what is called the airport layout plan, that is a change of the original agreement that put forth the governmental requirements of the airport commission. So, that's why we're here tonight. And when we look back at the runway 10 project, this is a project that really dates back to 1966. So, what is old is new again. And when we look back at this, I put a little picture of the, the, the plan up there because it's such an interesting concept. The Costco project, the runway 10 extension, all these ideas actually were generated back in the 60s. And so, we are bringing these ideas forward because now the time, we're seeing the growth that we've just taken place to put these ideas into place to, to continue to grow. So, the master plan was updated in 2006 to reflect a 500-foot extension to runway 10-28. 400 feet of that extension was completed in 2013. That would be on the east end of the airport towards Three Mile Road. What we're looking to complete now is a 115-foot extension towards the Garfield end. And so, we, once we did that 400-foot extension, we were originally proposed to do 400 feet on the Garfield end and actually bend Garfield Road. However, a lot of things changed in that timeframe. One of the things that we saw, new aircraft came into the mix. Boeing and Airbus both announced new engine aircraft into that mix. We also had lots of discussion with the airlines to find out exactly what they needed. Once we found out that if you cross 7,000 feet, so you're 7,001 foot to 7,499, you are in the same engineering performance bucket. And that's the way the airlines look at these, at these designations, 500-foot buckets. So, we went back to the drawing board and said, "Well, if we can, what's the maximum length that we can achieve for the runway length without impacting Garfield Road?" And that runway length was 7,015. That got us into the engineering performance bucket that we needed to be in, and we didn't have to impact Garfield Road. That saved the project almost $5.5 million. So, one of the, the proposed development that we're talking about is 115-foot extension, the associated taxiways to support that, the installation of a perimeter road to complete the perimeter road around the airport for security purposes, the installation of a, a light lane, if you're familiar with the light lane on Three Mile Road, we're looking to duplicate that over on the, the Garfield end. One of the reasons is the runway, the instrument approach that's on the 28 end is we do not have that same approach on the 10 end. And when we have a lot of our winter weather with northeast winds, the aircraft approach from that, that direction, and we don't have the instrument procedures to come in. What's happening now with what's- What's happening now with what's, you hear the key phrase of next gen or GPS technology, GPS approaches are being put in place. By adding a light lane like this reduces what we call the minimums, or where an airplane has to make a decision to go around, and this improves the reliability in coming into Cherry Capital Airport. And then the remainder part of the project is the runway surface is 26 years old and needs to be milled and overlaid, and so we're looking to add that project here at the same time. So to take a look at what we're impacting, the red area is the runway extension itself. The light lane is the small dots coming off towards Garfield Road, and then the blue area is the overlay of the runway. The yellow is the perimeter road. That's what we're going to be constructing for this particular project. Cost of this project is 11.4 million dollars. That's the engineer estimate. We're expecting 5.9 million dollars to come from our Airport Improvement Program funds, or AIP. With that 1.8 million dollars, we've been rolling that over to apply to this project. And MDOT will be putting 328,000 in. The local airport will be putting 328,000 in. And then we have passenger facility charges, which will accomplish the other 5.2 million dollars. Passenger facility charges are again part of that ticket tax that you pay, it's $4.50. So another push for flying out of your local airport to support capital funding to the The main reason...
Kevin, you mentioned the 5.9, and actually it's 5.91750. You add up all those numbers, that comes to 11.8 million, which puts you 328,750...
I will say that there's been a slide or an error within the other, it's 11.4 million at this time.
Okay, but it's even in our packet.
They copied this chart to the packet, so I, the total cost is at 11.4 million.
Okay, so some, one of the entities are not providing, because it happens to be that 328,750 is what the math is off. So it's like, like one of those entities don't exist.
I will double-check the math, but the total project, it's based, the way the project grant goes, it's 90% federal, 10% divided state-local. And that's based off the 11.4, so that didn't carry over.
So it's 11.4 million project, period?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's based on engineering estimate, so we'll see how bids fall through. Okay, heading back to, the reason for the runway extension is what we were taking on is in the heat of the day in our summertime months, when our most demand is taking place. The runway, we were taking weight penalties for the capacity of the aircraft. The DC-9 aircraft was taking weight penalties of up to 14 passengers being displaced on the flight. The regional jets were averaging 2 to 3 passengers per flight. So when we went back to the FAA, we wanted to make sure that we were really focused on improving that situation, because that's when our community has the most revenue potential to secure its longtime commitments with the airlines being here. So it's when the airlines make the most money. And so we wanted to improve that opportunity. Everybody's seen what happened with United in the last couple of days. Well, this is the same thing that people were being displaced in our heat of, hot, warm months. So we wanted to correct that, and by doing this extension, we correct that. Also, one of the other issues, Delta Airlines puts what's called a special winter hops designation on our airport because our runway is less than 7,000 feet. So therefore, they put operational limitations on their airplane during winter time, so this will assist in lifting some of those operational limitations for the airport.
Question. So how many flights, I'm asking this because my husband wants to know.
Okay.
How many flights in the summertime does this 14 people on the big jets, I mean, how many daily flights have an impact? And when you define summer, I mean, you know, this is northern Michigan, so summer is like 4th of July to Labor Day.
Absolutely.
It's a pretty narrow window. So he's trying to do the math on like 11 million dollars times how many people times how many years.
Absolutely. When you look at the breakdown of the 11 million dollars, the runway extension is just a portion of that. The overlay of the runway is actually the majority of that 11.4 million dollars. So you're not going to divide it over the total cost.
Are you going to do the overlay anyway?
Yes, we have to.
Even if you don't get the extension?
Yes, we have to do that. It's just the age of that pavement. We're at the point where it's going to start delaminating and breaking apart, so that's going to have to take place.
So how do I, so how do I do the math for him?
The approximate is about $3 million is what the extension is going to be, the remainder is the overlay and the additional lights. What, your original question a year, there's approximately 100 flights a year that are impacted due to this activity.
Okay.
And that's on average.
That seems low, because I'm telling you, I'm on the flight path, and I swear to God, there's 50 planes a day in the summertime.
Well, yeah, absolutely. It's that temperature is the key factor of when those passengers are displaced. So if we're operating in the upper 70s, we're not typically impacted. It's those warm days that we're impacting, and that's what it's, that's how the FAA bases a capacity analysis on, is that warm temperature day. So that's where it comes from.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just to point out, we will not impact Garfield Road. That has been a concern of the community and the different designs that we talked about with the bending, so we will not be impacting Garfield Road with any type of bend. So the overall part of the project is to improve the overall safety and efficiency of the runway operation. The obstruction clearing that we have to deal with involves trees that are in the existing property, but they're in the current runway protection zone, and I'll demonstrate that in a minute. We're going to approximately remove over 265 trees that are within these properties. And that's approximately 35 properties that we'll be working with. When we look at, this is the current runway protection zone, and we look at all the yellow and green dots that are there, those are obstructions to the current runway. So if we did nothing today, we would still have to remove these obstructions. What's happening is if we don't remove these obstructions, the FAA then will issue us a notice to displace that threshold, shortening the runway even more. So that's why it's key to take a look at this project. Now, not just from an extension standpoint, we have to deal with it for the current runway threshold. But the interesting thing is, is if we deal with it with the current threshold, we actually remove less trees. And the reason is, is that runway protection zone is a trapezoidal shape. And when you move that trapezoidal shape back for the extension, you impact three less properties of trees that need to remove. So the same green and yellow dots are there, it's just as that is displaced back further, we impact less properties. Not a great amount, but it's a few less. So we look forward to doing that. We had a public hearing on our environmental assessment on this, and we met with the majority of the property owners, and in this area, there are a lot of mature trees that are dropping a lot of acorns. And so this residential group has expressed the interest of the airport to assist them in removing these trees and negotiating these aviation easements to resolve a major issue that they're having in their community.
Kevin, are those on the Garfield end or the Three Mile?
It's all on the Garfield end. So the major areas that we're looking at for tree clearing actually fall within the Town and Country Mobile Home Park and the adjacent Mobile Home Park that's a subdivision. And then there's a couple of properties at the back of Forest Lane that are impacted, and then there's a few property off of Boone Street that's our main areas.
So there's no actual homes that you would need to remove or anything?
No.
It's all trees?
It's trees.
Okay.
And then with the aviation easements, then we'll be negotiating a height limit for which future trees or obstructions, flagpoles, that kind of stuff that they put on their property will be allowed to go to. Our anticipated schedule is to go for project bids in June, construction to begin in August, with our main construction in happening in the last two weeks of September to the October 1, which that runway will be shut down completely for the reconstruction. Our north-south runway will be in operation. And then after that's all completed, there will be paint markings and grooving that takes place in October, and final flight check that will take place in January with the active approach being finally approved by the FAA in March of 2018. Looking at the construction phasing, just beginning in August is more the lighting work that's taking place alongside the runway, and then setting up different storage areas for material. Then we'll start the construction of the taxiways that meet the approach end of the runway, so that will intersect with our north-south runway, so that will be closed during part of this time. And then we hit a grading area, which will displace the threshold during that construction portion. The runway will go from 6,900 feet down to 6,000 feet during this week. And then we'll hit our main closure, which is closing the main runway for a two-week period. The former runway that ran from where the college sits today towards South Airport Road, there, part of the old naval base was a runway, we labeled it 523. That runway goes and intersects the main runway right about where the arrow box where that says runway 10-28 closed and resurfacing, right about where that black line hits that purple crosshatch. Right there was the intersection of that old runway. That area of the runway will be completely torn down to the subbase and rebuilt because of that crown of that old intersection needs to be removed. So that runway, that'll be reconstructed in about an 800-foot section. So when you look at why the big cost, that particular area is where a lot of those costs are going to be with that reconstruction. Continuing on, then it's just finishing up that area, and that's the main runway closure, and then we get into the grooving and the paint marking. Hopefully, we have a great fall, and it doesn't rain, and we don't get impacted. But those are the, those are the things that we have to do to do a construction project within this timeframe. And then that's the perimeter road that will happen as part of, in the September timeframe. The continuing of the light lane that'll be constructed, and that's the end of the slideshow.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anybody have any other questions for Kevin? Yes.
Can you keep us informed as to what federal dollars may be withdrawn from some of Michigan's small airports like Alpena, Pellston, Manistee?
Certainly.
Because I don't think anything's actually happened yet, but...
Certainly, that, what you're referring to is the essential air service program that was recently talked about in multiple news applications, because President Trump looked at that as a program to slash from his budget. This is a program that provides dollars to rural community airports to support or subsidize air service. It's a program that's funded at about $270 million. Half of those funds come from overflight fees that we charge to use our airspace. So if a European carrier is flying to Mexico and overflies the United States, we have a charge, and that goes to those overflight fees. Right now, he's proposing to eliminate the program altogether. Today, prior to coming, Senator Peters' staff was at the airport, and we had a meeting between all Michigan airport managers, some attended via conference call to talk about this very subject. Senator Peters is going to fight for the essential air service dollars, to fight for these communities, and so we have a very good friend in Senator Peters for that. Every president since the inception of the program, since deregulation, has proposed a cut or change to essential air service, but the program has only grown. So I don't think you're going to see it go away. It may be refined in different ways, but I think the program will definitely remain long-term.
Is it just those three airports I mentioned, or is it including Lansing?
No, they're, no, it's the airports that are within the essential airport program, Muskegon...
Oh, Muskegon.
Manistee, Pellston, Alpena, Sioux St. Marie, Esconaba, Houghton Hancock, Iron Mountain, I'm missing one.
Kinslo.
No, Mark, Sawyer is not in the program. They were at one time, but they're out of the program.
Well, it's all just budget talk right now.
Correct.
Yes.
And so I feel very confident in that program remaining. Part of that program is what's called the Small Communities Air Service Grant. Cherry Capital Airport receives, or are eligible to receive those dollars. And we received that grant for the Dallas flight, and that grants $750,000 to offset the risk for Dallas operation. And so that would be part of that program cut. But since we received the grant for that flight, the likelihood of us receiving another grant is very minimal. So we kind of got our one shot at that program.
Any other questions? Sunny?
Kevin, no. We're being asked tonight to approve this easement agreement. The airport's jointly owned between Lelandale and Grand Traverse County. Does Lelandale also have to approve this?
Yes, they have. They did that last night.
They did it last night?
That's correct, and they have approved it.
Ron?
How, the trees that are being cut down, what's the height? What's the height of, and are there some towers in this neighborhood as well? I mean, somebody's got a ham radio tower?
The ham radio tower hasn't been identified as an obstruction. The heights actually start at around 55 feet at the eastern edge of that property, and they go back to about 70 feet from where we're finished cutting. If you go all the way to Barlow, some of those utility poles run about 80 to almost 90 feet, and we're not impacting those. So it's a slope that we're working on.
And you've already had, you've already contacted these...
Correct.
...homeowners?
For the environmental assessment, we had to contact all the homeowners within that area to make them aware of the environmental document that they could come in and see. We held that public hearing on the 14th of March, and then we'll, after tonight, if it approved, then we can go back and tell the FAA, we have the full authority to negotiate on both owners of the property to achieve these aviation easements, and then we'll approach them to proceed forward. But right now, we're receiving a lot of positive feedback because of the trees that are mature. There's people calling us daily, and when are we going to do it?
So there will be an anticipated cost for the easements to the individual property owners that have the trees that are going to be removed?
Correct. We'll do, the FAA requires the airport to do a property appraisal on every, all 35 properties that are impacted, and then we'll negotiate the aviation easement based off of those appraisals. That's correct.
I know in Long Lake Township, where I've been working in different developments, oak trees, once we started messing with them, cutting them, their oak wilt sets in and they're gone.
Correct. We anticipate the majority of these trees will be removed to the ground. That's what we anticipate.
Okay.
Because of that fact.
So the logs, it'd be done with it.
Anybody else?
One of the other points I want to put forward, the Town and Country rental, it's a rental community. There is a current aviation easement over that community. It dates back to the 40s. If we were to enact that easement, every one of those homeowners would be responsible to remove the trees themselves. So we went to the FAA, knowing the income levels of those that are within that area... So we went to the FAA, knowing the income levels of those that are within that area, to achieve that project would be impossible. So we went to the FAA to ask, could we renegotiate that easement so that we could come in and help with that situation? And the FAA has given us that opportunity.
Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorflet, supported by Commissioner Wheelock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Seriously? So it has to be a roll call? It has to be a roll call anyway? Okay. Go, Sarah. Gorflet?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
It wouldn't matter. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. I'm just curious why. Anyway, thank you very much, Kevin.
It shouldn't be that easy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, so we're going to move on.
I should note, though, because of my earlier comment, we said that Air Force One and Air Force Two were the first two planes?
You did say that.
But we have to recognize that Senator Levin was huge in getting us the funding to build our airport and our expansion. And I had commented with him one day about the fact that the first two planes here were Air Force One and Two, and he said he wasn't here that day. But I do certainly want to recognize Senator Levin's participation in expanding the airport in Traverse City, because it would not have happened without his work.
And I echo your comments. He helped us, so everybody, the total terminal project was $63 million, and at the time, 9/11 is when the bids took place. And so every project across the country stopped. But through Senator Levin's help and the Airport Commission at the time, they chose to move forward. Through his help, we secured that $63 million, and not, we did not have to get into a bonding project. So that achievement is, I think, a one-in-a-million opportunity, but for that achievement, we've been able to keep our costs low at the airport to benefit those carriers coming in and out. So it gives us one of the most, I think, competitive advantages in the industry. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to finance. Our monthly report from Jody.
Well, thank you. So again, this month, this is an abbreviated version of the full report with the detail of all of the special revenue funds. That will come again at the quarter end, so next month's monthly finance report will have a great deal more pages. I did my best in this month's memo to highlight some of the events that had either occurred or failed to occur in 2016, leading to a greater-than-anticipated projected surplus for that year ending. To provide you with some additional information, for the current-year activity, at the end of February, we would have been, or completed 17% of the 2017 fiscal year. So again, in reviewing the report, to look down that column and to see whether or not the various departments are maintaining their budgets, to look for expenditures that are less than 17% here to date.
Anybody have any questions for Jody on the page?
So have we closed 2016?
So again, I would not say that we have officially closed until we have provided the auditors with a trial balance, and even then, there will be journal entries that will be worked on in conjunction with our audit firm to finalize our financial statements for filing and issuance, but they are nearly complete, yes.
Anybody else? We will move on to introduction of our new audit.
Okay, so we had moved, as you recall from last week, fairly quickly to obtain proposals from a number of audit firms. The Board of Commissioners then approved the engagement with Gaybridge and Company. I would like to introduce Joseph Verlin, who is a CPA and CGFM. He's the lead on the account for the county's audit for Gaybridge and Company. I had not provided last week when we discussed, but I did speak with two of the finance directors on his other county accounts. I spoke with the finance director from Calhoun County and the finance director from Alleghen County, and they could not say enough good things about Joe. Some of the comments that they made, for instance, were to remark on his attentiveness, his responsiveness, his ability to communicate with staff as well as with the elected officials. So from a staff's perspective, hearing that's very encouraging as we're moving forward with a new firm. He did start yesterday, Tuesday, on the fieldwork out at Grand Traverse Pavilions. So before I introduce Joe formally, I'll just touch on the fact that he's a graduate of Ferris State University. He's a member of the AICPA, MICPA, MML, the Michigan Local Government Management Association, the AICPA Governmental Audit Quality Center, the Association of Government Accountants, and the GFPA. He is the co-chair of the MICPA Governmental Accounting and Auditing Task Force. He's engaged in a number of speaking engagements about governmental accounting, and again, will be serving as the principal on the county's account. So Joe, if you would, maybe share a little bit more about yourself and your firm?
Sure. So again, I would like to thank the Board for approving our proposal to serve as your auditors for the 2016 audit. I can say that we are very excited to be able to serve as your auditors. And just a little bit of background about our firm, we currently have two offices, one in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and another one locally here in Traverse City, right by the Apache Grill. So we do have a local presence. We will be staffing this engagement with a group of local auditors, in addition to myself. So Jody had mentioned some of my background. In addition to myself, we have three other individuals who will be staffing this engagement. They have 10-plus years of auditing experience in the state of Michigan. We also have roughly 145 governmental and nonprofit audit engagements throughout the state of Michigan, so this very much is something that our firm specializes in. We will, including 14 counties that we actively serve, the staff that's been assigned to this engagement does participate in those 14 engagements, so we understand the nuances of getting into a county and auditing the various departments and the decentralized activities. So you will have a team of experts assigned to your audit. I was going to talk a little bit about myself, but Jody's covered a lot of that already. A couple of other areas that might be worth pointing out is the fact that I serve as a technical reviewer for the Government Finance Officers Association, which means that six times per year, they send me an audit report that's been submitted for the GFPA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So I stay on top of those standards and those reporting requirements, and see some of the best practices that are out there, that other local units are performing throughout the state of Michigan. So we do stay on top of that. In addition to that, I am also, have received the Advanced Certification for Single Auditing from the AICPA, relatively new certification that they've provided. So again, we do actively strive to be able to hold ourselves out to be experts in the governmental accounting and auditing field. So we anticipate wrapping up fieldwork at the Pavilions on Friday this week to kind of get the ball started on the overall county engagement. After that, we plan on working on planning procedures for the county, setting materiality, reading through minutes, working with the finance staff to develop a list of documents that we will need in order to perform the fieldwork procedures, which we have scheduled tentatively for May 15. We will have staff here throughout two to three weeks to make sure that we've got an audited trial balance at the end of fieldwork. The goal will be to have a trial balance that has been, all of the auditing procedures have been completed. We can tie back from our audited trial balance to the county's trial balance. We want to make sure that the county has a chance to review any proposed entries. If there are any, we will make sure to take the time to sit down and discuss with the finance staff the reason behind any adjustments, any proposed adjustments, and make sure that we concur with those adjusting entries. Once we finish that up, we will move right into the reporting procedures. Again, I mentioned, there will be a team of anywhere from five to six of us working on this engagement throughout the process, to make sure that we stay on track to have the report timely prepared. So we will have a draft to the county, a draft of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by June 16 is our target date, as well as an expectation of going final one week later after the county has a chance to review and ask questions. Certainly, we will plan a meeting to sit down and review the draft CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And the goal is to go final on June 23, which will give us ample time to submit the audit to the Federal Audit Clearing House, as well as the Michigan Department of Treasury, and it will allow the county to, seven days, to remit the check to the GFPA for the award in excellence in financial reporting, to continue that string of consecutive years of receiving that award, as well as to provide the GFPA a copy, a digital copy of the CAFR. So in a nutshell, that's what our plan is. One of the things that I did want to make sure to point out to the Board of Commissioners is we walk on active communication throughout the course of the year with our clients. Again, because we're local, we're more than happy to be here up to, once a quarter, to sit down and talk about new pronouncements. There are new OPED, Other Post Employment Benefit Standards, that GASB has issued, and it's important to understand what the impact is going to be on the financial statements of the county. We're more than happy to be here on a quarterly basis to discuss those types of issues, if there are any findings during the audit process. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss it on a quarterly basis and kind of check up on the county and see how things are going, to make sure that those findings are being corrected. And if there are any questions about, you know, what the county's corrective action has been, that's a forum for us to discuss it and make sure that everything is on track to rid the county of any findings on a go-forward basis. So that's a little bit about who I am and who our firm is, and I'm more than happy to answer any further questions that the Board might have.
Anybody have any questions for Joe?
Welcome to Grand Traverse County.
We're excited to be here.
Yes, thank you for applying and accepting.
Especially on short notice. We do appreciate it.
Yes, very much.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to the Cass Road Agreement. Chris, can you explain this a little bit?
Sure. I did. Thank you. Eight summers of support on Monday, provided you with a current copy. So let me give you a little background. So in 2013, the Board of Commissioners and the Road Commission entered into a development agreement that described the development of loaning the Cass Road Bridge and the removal of the border dam, and which party was responsible for the sequels and all those destruction to the county. At the time that that agreement was approved, it did have, I would describe it as a broad indemnity clause whereby the county would indemnify the road commission if something bad happened to the removal of the dam. That indemnity clause states that the county's duty to be to be indemnified is really dependent if the county has insurance. And at the time, we did add the road commission as additional insured for the general liability and stuff. For the environmental pollution insurance, we agreed that the indemnity would be the responsibility of the contractor, and the contractor had to purchase that insurance. The contractor did purchase that environmental pollution insurance for, I believe, up to $5 million per occurrence, named the county and the road commission as additional insurance. In 2016, there are questions asked from the commissioners about the county's exposure to liability if we had an event that occurred like in 2012, when Brownbridge Dam was removed and there was flooding. So based on those concerns, ultimately, additional insurance was purchased by the county through the administration. I believe the cost is approximately $25,000 to the county. So that insurance was purchased, giving us additional protection when it comes to environmental pollution claims. Prior to purchasing that insurance, we did reach out to the road commission staff, their attorney, Mr. Hook, and we did talk to them about, well, if we're going to purchase insurance, we should really look at the indemnity language, and we should change that or eliminate that. They agreed ultimately to eliminate that language, provided that the road commission was named as an additional insured. They were, and so that's why this amendment is here today. And I'll note that we did consult with Scott Howard, who is an environmental attorney and does represent the county in various projects, and he concurred with purchase of the environmental insurance, what we're doing. The Second Amendment also basically identifies that the Army Corps of Engineers is now in charge of the project, so that's another change to it as well. So that, in a nutshell, is what is being presented by you today. There is the draft Second Amendment, and I hope I did provide you with a somewhat intelligent explanation of what we're doing.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorflet, supported by Commissioner Wheelock.
Chris, a couple things. I'm assuming the contractor still is required to have their own insurance, and the county will be named as a co-insured on that along with the road commission, correct?
Yes, in fact, Carrie Zeitz, the roads commission attorney, she did provide us with a certificate two weeks ago that the...
I thought Carrie didn't have anything to do with it. She just came in.
That the contractor does have, you know, the appropriate environmental insurance, the appropriate other insurance, and that we're both named as insured.
What's the amount?
It's up to $5 million per...
What did, 2012, what was the exposure from that event?
The, at the time, the city and everybody else sued. The lawsuit was a multi-count complaint, elected various things. At the end of the day, the county has paid, as far as I know, nothing. All the liability was shifted to the contractor.
Do we know what that amount of liability was?
I do not know that amount. I do know it was substantially less than what was being asked. I can tell you that.
Okay, but you're comfortable that $5 million is sufficient?
Yes.
To protect us?
I have.
Thank you.
Well, they have $5 million, plus we have an additional coverage over and above that.
Yeah, we have our own separate policy, our own separate insurance.
I'm not sure if it's just my copy or if all of the copies are this way, but however this got typed, I got all kinds of spaces in between.
Yeah, top, and 3.9.
All different kinds of words with spaces in the middle, and I don't know.
I saw that too, Sonny. I can't explain that either. I don't know if when it was converted to PDF.
It was late last night when I was reading this agreement, and it was like really difficult.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes to you. No old unfinished business, no new business. Now's our chance for a second public comment. Anybody has anything to say at this point? Then I'll run it once. No? Okay. Commissioner Department reports. We have Mr. Psyche would like to come and talk to us a little bit.
Good evening. John Psyche, Planning Director. I was asked to give you an update. I know I only have five minutes, so I will be very brief and hopefully very informative to you. Five things. One, as the planning department is now engaged in reaching out to our local communities to provide planning, community planning services, doing master plans, rec plans, grant applications, customized training, review assistance with development reviews, and actually, we got our, we're in the process of starting some work with East Bay Township as they are looking at developing a corridor plan for Onson Avenue that goes along the Bay Shore. So we're going to be assisting them in terms of doing some meeting and workshop facilitation as well as some document development out of that. Second item is... Second item is some of our upcoming training opportunities. We're working with MSU Extension to provide the Citizen Planner Program here in May, in June. That's a seven-session course that's provided to planning commissioners and other officials that want to get more involved in planning and zoning and understanding what's required of them. We also have our Planners Lunch and Learn Series, which is a group of professional planners, zoning administrators, planning commission chairs, sometimes elected officials. We have a meeting on May 3 at 11:30, goes from 11:30 to 11:00, and that's going to be short-term rentals. So that one, we already got at least 15 people already signed up for that, and will probably be a lot more, because that's one, as you've probably read, that a lot of the communities are dealing with in terms of how to manage short-term rentals. We're also going to be teaming up with Michigan Association of Planning later this year to do a CIP workshop, Capital Improvement Planning Workshop, with an emphasis on energy Number three is we've streamlined our zoning reviews pursuant to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. The planning, county planning commission reviews all the zoning changes that occur in townships. We have now gone through a new policy that was adopted earlier this year where we've really streamlined, where we're not looking at all the reviews, we're looking at the major reviews. So that allows for that process to be expedited in terms of those applications, or if the township itself is making those changes, to go quicker. And so far, so good. It has also lightened the load a little bit for the planning commission on that, has resulted at least in one meeting cancellation. So we go, because we only essentially meet unless there's going to be some action needed to be taken. Number four is we got a couple of issues, long-term issues that are coming up that we try to prepare for. One is the medical marijuana facilities, that is, the licensing laws that went into effect last year. The state right now is putting those regulations in place. They have until December 15, when they're supposed to be licensing the five different types of facilities. Communities right now should be engaged and determine whether they're going to permit them, and then how many they're going to permit of the five different types of facilities. That requires basically two different ordinances, a zoning ordinance, excuse me, a police power ordinance to allow for them to be located in the community, and then a zoning ordinance in terms of the location and managing the different requirements for those facilities. That's something we're encouraging communities to start now, those conversations. If they do nothing, then those facilities are not permitted whatsoever in that community. So it takes a while for these things to get going. We're encouraging people to talk about those. And also, believe it or not, we're already getting ready for the census 2020. That starts this year, at least for local governments, in terms of looking at the addresses so that we can assure a better return rate for the county. That's really important, because that census is used for a lot of resources that come into this county, particularly federal resources and so forth. And to have a more accurate, most accurate count is important. And finally, is getting ready. We have our current master plan, which I have copies for some of, for you this evening, if you have not looked at this. As you can see, it's a very thin plan. It purposely was designed, this was in 2013 when we did this. This was a real bottom-up approach. We utilized all 119 planning commissioners within the county to develop this plan. It's a very lean plan, and purposely, because we know that the local communities already have their local plans and zoning ordinances, what we wanted to do was kind of aggregate those values into a plan. We're looking at, for updating this in 2018, we're going to take a different tact on this and expand it, kind of calling it Master Plan 2.0. This was a pretty innovative process that we used in terms of really kind of throwing out the rules, in terms of building these big, thick documents, and really streamlining the process by incorporating the values of the community. But it's mostly focused on the public sector. What we want to do next year in 2018 is engage the private sector a lot more, particularly those organizations that are involved in the development areas in our community. So it's something that we're pretty excited in terms of really trying to figure out this year on how to do that engagement. It really comes down to a lot of meetings and talking and listening to people and incorporating their ideas. When we did this plan, just so you know, it didn't cost the county a dime. Actually, we made $21,000 on this through the process. And that's how we, that's how I tend to operate this, is we do a lot of it in-house. We only use consultants for very specific skill sets that we may need or efforts. So we don't, we keep it pretty lean and pretty much to the point, and I think it becomes a much more effective and useful plan in the end. Questions or comments?
Any questions for John?
Few comments. No. Having deep roots in townships, I am very, very pleased with the focus of the county planning department to help the townships. You know, the townships are no longer able to, you know, first, we have to remember that Michigan is a home real estate. All the zoning and regulations are the responsibility of the townships first. And, you know, we can, we can do all we want to say, you know, we want you to do this or that, but the bottom line is their decision. So what we need to do is to help to coordinate between the townships and to make sure that they're well-educated so we're making good decisions. And, you know, a regional approach is working much better. You know, I used to tell people that what they did in Elmira Township, in Benzey County, and Elwood Township, in Leland County, affected me a whole lot more in Long Lake Township than what they were doing in Union Township. You know, it was, it was just that simple. So, but I think it's very important that we recognize John's efforts to try to coordinate between the townships and try to get consistent rules across the board. But remember that we, this has to be done from them down, or from them up. And that's why the last master plan was so successful, I believe, is because it brought those groups of people together, and we drew a plan with their input moving up, not the county trying to set a plan for the community as a whole. Because if we have to remember, those decisions are theirs, not ours.
Anybody else? Thank you, John. That was awesome and totally within your time limit.
Cool. And I'm going to hand out this plan, and if you've seen it and don't want to look at it again, hand it off to somebody else, okay?
Okay. We'll pass it on. Thank you, John.
Great, thank you.
Move on to notices. I have a couple of notices about upcoming meetings. Thank you. At our first May meeting, which is May 3, I believe Jody said that we would have a contract by then with MERS? Did you say that last Thursday? The, it was obvious at the, at the study session that one thing that we wanted to pursue was the 16-year amortization with MERS, possibly.
Well, I don't think we were going to do this piecemeal.
No.
Why would we do this piecemeal?
I think, how long did we have to, because there was, was there a certain time limit on their offer? There was not.
Okay.
Then we will discuss it at the May 3 meeting.
Discuss what?
Discuss possibly accepting the contract to go to 16-year amortization with MERS.
Are we not doing a study session on the 10th?
On the 10th, we are going to do a study session on bonding. I can push the other one back, and we can do everything all at once?
It just doesn't make sense to me to piecemeal.
Okay.
I mean, I thought we were looking at a total solution.
Okay.
So I would be more comfortable coming up with something that's going to
Then we can wait until after the May 10 bonding study session. That's fine. Is that acceptable?
I think it's more important that we discuss the options before we say, okay, this is the one.
Got it.
We're going to do this piece or that piece.
Okay.
The 16 years will become a discussion with the bonding also, because of the fact that
It will.
The bond requires that we have the same amortization of the bond as we would if the amortization of MERS.
Okay. We can put that off until the May 10 and discuss it all at once again.
Thank you.
Okay? And so, Tom, what about your pension board discussion?
Yeah, to develop a timeline to dissolve the Pension Advisory Board, we could do that on the first meeting, which would be the third, or we can wait until after the study session, depending on how everyone feels.
I think we should wait until after we come up with a total plan.
Until we decide what we're going to do with the pension debt, I don't believe we're in a position to eliminate any, either move forward or eliminate any particular pieces of the prize.
Okay. I just want to know how everybody felt about those, so.
But at this point, I don't think the Pension Advisory Board has any scheduled meetings. That's just a note, so they're not actually doing anything. And then, for the Wednesday, May 10 study session, we would go ahead and invite a couple people who experienced bonding.
Yes.
And if you want to designate somebody to do that.
I think Jody was going to help us with that in securing people to come and present for the bonding discussion on May 10?
Yes, I absolutely
Successful and unsuccessful.
I absolutely can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I might just add that I'm looking for an academic person, you know, college professor, for example, who might be able to shed light on explaining it to the board members. You know, there is some confusion over various aspects of bonding, and I'm looking for somebody to come in and not, you know, be doing business with us, but just to offer their expertise. You know, maybe somebody from one of the colleges or universities that serves the area.
I am happy to take that. I have actually reached out to a number of individuals to get direction on the best resource for providing us an unbiased third-party opinion, well, not even necessarily an opinion, but an analysis, as I had mentioned during the study session, so that if the board should choose to move forward with bonding, they understand both the benefit, the savings that might be had, but also the risks.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sure. I had conversation with Chris, and Jean, and Ron, and, you know, one of the pieces that we've been talking about was the potential saleability of some of the county assets in order to resolve some of our debt. And what I was given left me feeling that we own a lot of properties that maybe aren't saleable for a variety of reasons. And I think that it would be really helpful, if possible, for that May 10 session to have a clear delineation of which parcels might be saleable or returnable, which would put them back into the tax rolls. In other words, if they were a gift that we could give back. Because we, some of us have been thinking that that might be a piece of the solution. And if it really isn't a piece, then I think we need to have that information in order to make, you know, the best choice about where we should be trying to put our energies to resolve this issue. So I would personally appreciate having a better handle on, I mean, I have a list that has a whole lot of parcels. It tells me when we got them, it tells me what we paid for them when we got them, doesn't tell me what their encumbrance is, if any, doesn't tell me what their current value is, although I think Ron has given me something that might have that more current value. But I don't know who that would go to, to accomplish, but I think it's, you know, I think it's an important piece. If it's $1 million, it doesn't help us a lot. If it's $30 million, that helps us a lot more. And I think it's something that we need to consider. I would tell you that I did, I did take heart, you know, the conversation at the study session, and I do think everybody here does do research and does do their own studying and does try to come, not just with what we're given, but as a kicking-off point to do some of our own stuff. And I did look at the Headley rollback. I have to say, in my opinion, it's not a good option. I don't see where there's been any success anywhere doing a Headley rollback. I know that, I think, Jody might have said that there's a lot of counties that are looking at it, or somebody said it at this session, that there were a lot of counties that are looking at Headley as a possible solution, but so far, nobody's had any success.
Yeah, so to that point, it's one that the local units of government across the state have expressed a great deal of consternation, if that's the right word, with, because of the bind that it puts the local unit in when it comes to raising revenue. So it's something that I agree not many have experienced success with when going towards the voters to request a reset, but it's definitely something that's being pressed at the state level for some sort of legislation.
A change in legislature is going to be much more likely to be successful than individual counties taking it out to the ballot.
Well, and I guess I just wanted to share that, because, you know, we were looking at all solutions, and I don't think that's part of the piece. It's not timely. It's just not, we need a, we need a solution, and we don't want to, we don't, we've committed to not continuing to kick this down the road. So Headley is not, I think, going to be a solution for us.
Okay. As far as the property pieces, I saw Jen was furiously writing. Can you maybe take that on?
We've looked at this before. I think it's, there's multi-departments. We'll see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Probably just if we have an inventory of the parcels that we own, and just a simple comment that how we got them, whether they were donated and whether they have encumbrances on them.
Yeah, we need to know if they're saleable or not.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Okay. No closed session? Okay, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.